It is 7:00 on Thursday, February 8th. This is the regular council meeting for the city of Albernett. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. If you please join me. Flag on the wall.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bozenberg, Hoco?
Counsel Trump.
Pardon.
Counsel Bozenberg?
Present.
Counsel Sukup?
Present.
He is not present. Counsel Myers?
Present.
Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Soon.
Second by Myers, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We will go ahead and recognize our sheriff's deputy. So you do have the report in your packet on page five.
Good evening. The DPP's sheriff's office. Looks like this period of 111 through 28, required town hours were met with a total of 15 calls for service. Nothing really jumps out at me as too significant. Are there any questions, comments, concerns that can be passed on to the patrol division or the sheriff's office in general?
No, I think we're good.
No.
Thanks so much for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
You're good. Have a good night.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
So now we will go back. We'll open the public hearing at 7:02. Open the public hearing for the amendment to floodplain ordinance. This is chapter 160. In regards to this public hearing, we did just do codification. We recodified all of our ordinances. After that FEMA came out with some changes to the floodplain ordinance. So they are minor changes. There's additions to definitions. So under new construction, it now does also include accessory structures. You guys don't have to necessarily follow along. Anywhere where it referenced a floodplain district, they're now calling it a floodway fringe district. So that was a FEMA change in terminology, so that had to be changed throughout. There is a sentence that we have eliminated because it is no longer necessary. There was a typo where it said designated, and it should have been designed. So just a few corrections, and those are all coming from FEMA. Any questions from the public on the amendment to the floodplain ordinance? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing at 7:03. All right, that moves us into the mayor's report. I have a brief report tonight, and this is just in regards to the January snowstorm. So I would just like to thank all those that assisted. Staff put in a lot of time. I know we had some council members jump in and help. Our contractors came quickly when requested. There were a lot of hands and a lot of moving parts. We've also received a lot of feedback, which is okay. I will say that was not your normal storm, not your typical storm. It was also for, one of our staff members is very first. So we are, we have met. I met with both Chris and Mac to talk about lessons learned. And while it wasn't our normal storm, what I do appreciate is it presented challenges that we don't usually see. And so it's a great opportunity to document some of those lessons learned. And we will be actioning those in the coming months as we put together and shore up a snow removal policy, as well as a few other things. So what I will ask of council is if you have any feedback from the storm and the response, please send that to Chris and myself, so that we can make sure that makes its way into the policy. That is it for my mayor's report. We'll move on now to council. We'll start with Counsel Myers.
Nothing.
Counsel Sukup?
Nothing.
Counsel Bozenberg?
Nothing at this time.
Counsel Trump?
Nothing, please.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. We have two types of comments here in the city of Albernett. Those that are agenda-related and non-agenda-related. We do ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak. So do I have any comments on agenda-related items?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Roberta Harbor, 208 Howard Street. The agenda is the digital sign policy. I think it is so sad that the issues over the digital sign have come to this. A policy that organizations will have to jump through hoops just to get the information to the city council, and then it may not even be approved. Who is the city council staff that is approving the application? In a policy, it's vague and not specifically delineated. I personally contacted several mayors and city clerks in the surrounding towns who have community signs and boards, and none have felt the need to go to such lengths to develop anything remotely like the requirements outlined in the policy that has been drawn up by your lawyer and paid for by us, the taxpayers. I have that information with me this evening if any of the city council members want to look at it. I did submit information to mayor several months ago regarding my findings, but I would gladly share it with any of you. The 72 contributors of the sign wanted to see adequate information displayed, not as city administrator Chris told me this morning in an email. Quote, "Minimal amount of information will be posted, provided on the sign with the event and who is sponsoring the event." Why does it have to be minimal? The sign is quite capable of storing 18 messages in our slides, so why is there a limit of six slide screens only to be active at one time? It's important, and we need to showcase our community, and the digital sign is one way to do that. If a request is denied, the policy says applicants may appeal by written request to be heard at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. However, the information on the sign is only going to be displayed for two weeks. So by the time it comes to the appeal process, the event will most likely already have taken place, as the city council only meets monthly. Doesn't seem to make too much sense to me. The negativity that radiates from the lack of this city council's small-town community atmosphere is disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on agenda-related items?
We talked about the snowstorm, so I don't know if that's related.
It would be none, non-agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to non-agenda-related items.
I have non-agenda-related items. My name is Rachel Peterson. I live at 209 Moot Heart Street, and I was fined $170 for not shoveling a sidewalk. We almost always shovel our sidewalks. You said that that storm was kind of a, you know, big deal. It was out of the ordinary. But I did not know that we had an ordinance for that, and probably I would have known, but it wasn't advertised anywhere that, like, hey, remember you need to shovel your sidewalks within 24 hours. The purpose of the whole ordinance is to enhance safety of the community, right? Because we want it to be clear. I get that. I'm happy to do that. But if that's the purpose of the ordinance, then you would want to make sure that every single member of this community was notified. We were not notified. Not everybody wasn't notified. It was posted in the Gazette under, what, Public Works Announcements, like in a, probably the least read part of the newspaper, three months ago. So probably if you would have put it on Albernett Friends and Family Facebook page, I don't know, there's 2,100 members of that. Do you think that the 725 members of Albernett maybe would have, you know, passed it on, shared it? It would have went viral. We all would have known that we had 24 hours to get our sidewalks cleared, and that's fine. I don't even have to go on to tell you, I'm a nurse at the hospital. I will tell you real quick, I spent three nights at the hospital to ensure my patients' safety. This wasn't done, the scooping of my sidewalk was done on January 25th, when it was almost 40 degrees outside. So I'm not sure, that feels a little passive-aggressive to me. And just that I was very busy and did not get to that sidewalk. We did clear others. In almost every snowstorm that we have, we not only clear our sidewalk, we go all the way down and clear the Martin sidewalk, and if Dave can't get to Shirley Lanning's, we go in and do hers. So to find the $170 bill in my mailbox, it was, I was so irritated, just like instantly irritated. No notification, no warning, no nothing, just, here you go, $170. I do appreciate that you waived it. I do appreciate that. And I just think that there's just such a better way to notify people. You could put it on the water bill. Everybody gets a water bill. It would have taken, hey, remember to shovel your sidewalks, or clear your sidewalks, or you will be fined. I looked up the ordinances. I'm not sure who else has enough time to read all those ordinances. There's 347 pages. That's just probably not common. My guess is that most citizens of this city have not read those on that Albernett website. It would be nice if you provided a link on the Facebook page to that ordinance, reminding everyone to scoop their sidewalks. I don't think it's a big deal. But anyway, I think you put it in the Gazette. There's a little over 100 papers delivered to Albernett every day. There's a little over, or a little under 300 homes in Albernett, which means that only a third of the people would have read that, or even, maybe not even gotten to that part. So it should have been put in a way that every single person in this community, if the purpose of that ordinance is to ensure the safety of our citizens, you would want everybody to know, or was the purpose of that ordinance to, you know, generate revenue? I don't know. It seems very, very harsh in this community. I've never heard of that policy before. I've lived here for over 50, like, 50 years, so most of my life has been spent here. We're usually a community. We come together. If somebody needed help, I'd be more than happy to do that. And so it just, it was very irritating. It felt passive-aggressive, and just not small-town. Even in Iowa City, you have to have a complaint. Somebody has to come out and inspect it, and then they leave a notice on your door, and then they give you an additional 24 hours to get it cleared. And then, if it's not cleared, then they have somebody come out and do it. And that's not small-town. This is small-town Albernett. Like, we're supposed to be a community, a family. Half of the people that live in this town are not just my friends, they're my family. I would do anything for them. They call me, can you come check my blood pressure? Hey, my dad's not feeling good. Hey, do you want to deliver my baby? That's the kind of things I do. I don't get fined $170 for not scooping one damn sidewalk. It's really irritating, really irritating, and I think it really hurts the feelings of a lot of people in this community. I would never want anybody to get hurt on my sidewalk, and I will be dang sure that I do that from now on. But it's not how we work in this community. We are a community of family and friends. My mechanic is my friend. My neighbors were my teachers. They're my friends. Not passive-aggressive, post $170 bill on your door for not scooping one sidewalk that wasn't even completely mine. It's not even all mine. So I didn't understand that.
That's probably my five minutes or more. Good at that.
I have to stand because I've taught to school for too many years. It's hard for me to sit down and talk. I'm Larry Levita. I live at 208 North Street. I was on the city council for two terms. I was head of the Board of Adjustment for another 20. So I've got 26 years of city government behind me. I'm here to just offer my opinion. It's not a reflection on you. It scares me when I look at the council members, and now I taught their kids, or the folks, and you got their kids up here now. That's wonderful. And before I get started with anything, I would like to thank the council and the mayor for hiring Matt Plight as a city man. You hired a very nice person. And I'm going to start out by being, he's my neighbor. If you want good neighbors...
Talk to him. Talk to them.
...you have to be a good neighbor. And I'll talk to both sides. You have to be a good neighbor. Now, when I was on the council, I had to be a decent leader, as well as a decent person to the constituents of my community. Make sense?
Yes.
And all I'm going to talk about is a little diplomacy. Rachel referred to the fact that she wasn't notified. And I think back to the days when I was on the council, there was another member in the council that felt like I did. If there were old people living on a street, and we had a snowstorm, and we knew they couldn't get out and shovel their sidewalks or the driveway, we took our snow blowers over to their house and did it for free, as a councilperson. That was good diplomacy. And when we have a lot, like 24 hours, which I don't like, I think it needs to be more than that, you've got to analyze all the different parameters that are involved. Just to give you an idea, we could have a registry with the clerk of the elderly people that want to have somebody clean their sidewalk, and they would pay a fee. I don't know how long it'd take to do a short sidewalk. 10 minutes with a snow blower? We hire an assistant in the summertime to help with the mowing, and on that registry we could have people that wanted to help clean sidewalks in the wintertime. And if the people, if I don't happen to have a sidewalk, but if I did, I would be glad to pay $15, $20 to have somebody do it. And that would pay for the assistant. He might be able to do two or three sidewalks in an hour, and that would more than pay his hourly rate. You know, it's not what you do, and I'm not, I'm not making reference to any of you. This is just my interpretation of people helping people. If you want to have good relationship with the community, you have to do a good job, a diplomacy with those people. And there's, like Rachel said, nobody knocked on her door. Well, I've had other things occur in the last five years, that nobody came to my house and talked to me about whether I was satisfied. One of them grated off my bank that I had paid big money for to get so I could mow the yard with my mower, my light rider. Then we had a water main break, and I don't remember ever seeing anybody come over and check to see what it looked like after it was done. Nobody talked to me. And you know what I'm not doing? What I'm suggesting is we improve diplomacy. And back in the day, and I know things change, but back in the day, the clerk always sent a letter out with the water bill. And that was a good way to get to everybody in the community. I thank you, people, for the job you're doing. I respect what you're doing. I've been in your seat. I've helped a lot of people out in this community, one way or the other. And I hope that I might shed a little bit of light on how things can be done. And you people have to be the judge of how they're done. No one's in it. I hope I have not offended anybody. I did hope that some of the things I say may have soaked in. It's kind of hard for me to talk, I'm maybe 6 years old, crowding 90, and I've got to get to sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Metz, 315 Howard Street. I'm going to get up and go stand by the door because I'm not going to be a very popular person here tonight. First of all, after the snowstorm, Bethany, I talked to you, Grant, I've talked to you. You all know I applaud for the city, man, for 13 years. Your guy needs some training. I'm more than willing to help out. I'll volunteer. I'll ride in a truck, or then whatever. I've plowed this town twice. I have a pretty good sense of how things, in my opinion, should be plowed. Secondly, the issues with the sidewalk, I just want to let everybody here know, I cleaned 17 sidewalks that snow, that snowstorm. I cleaned 17 driveways and sidewalks, some of which were owned by the city. I cleaned the city sidewalk in front of their shop. I was going to go out to the foundation, but I read snowstorm is really hard in the snowbore. Ordinances are in place for people's safety, as was spoken. And I don't feel, as somebody who has worked, works for a city and was a council member, it's not the city's job to tell you what the ordinances is. The ordinances are. They're online. You can come up here and get a paper copy of them. You all know this. I know this. I actually applaud the, I sort of applaud the invoice being sent out, because it got the sidewalk shoveled. Like I said, I did 17 driveways and sidewalks. Those people got their sidewalks done, as did I. I have probably one of the biggest sidewalks in town. I ran down the entire street. Grant, you know, I do your parents, the neighbors, I do the whole sidewalk. So anyway, I applaud you guys for that. Thank you all. I got to go.
Any other comments on non-agenda-related items?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on that, too. Just, I'm Vicky Kepa in 105 Glory Drive. I also served some time on the Edgerton Glory as well. Just that I felt, too, that a warning on the door, I also had read in some other towns where they do the warning on the door, they also put in the mail the warning, and you're given an additional $24 to do the streets. And like Rachel said, that's even in a bigger city than we are, so. Probably like with the mail, like with the water bill or whatever, that it'd just be like good, just rapport with the town, and, you know, things were like that, instead of just so harsh as Brian stated.
My name is Tina Smith. I came here tonight to lend support to our community members who received the threatening and intimidating notices from the city regarding the ordinance on snow removal. I am not surprised, not at all surprised, that we have gotten to this point, as Todd and I have also been target of this current administration. About a year ago, we were sent an intimidating notice regarding water and sewer work that we had done on our property 25 years ago. We were threatened with a fine of $1,000 a day if we could not prove documentation for that work. The IRS doesn't even require a citizen to keep records that long. So why does Albernett? Why has the current administration increased our ordinance pages to 350 in such a short time? Why is our current administration charging obnoxious fines for violations of these ordinances? Why are some members of the community targeted while others are clearly ignored? I'm curious, how many ordinance violations were issued to the school during the construction? During the construction of that eyesore that you let them build on Main Street? There should have been multiple ordinances sent regarding the school's work, blocking the sidewalk, parking on the sidewalk, not having construction waste and garbage contained, blocking the fire hydrant nearly every day for two years, broken and bent fencing, unlocked gates. OSHA violations include included refusal to wet down dust and debris, not shoring up deep holes and trenches, workers without hard hats, and even one with no shoes. And I know for a fact that other people, including our mayor, had to notice the cigarette butts on the school grounds, which is a violation of federal and state law. The city created this environment where the only way to get action is to complain, yet all of my complaints were ignored. At one point, the mayor told me that I obviously just wanted the city to fight my personal battle with my neighbors. No, I did not. I wanted the city to provide some oversight and hold these people accountable. I wanted the city to do their job and protect the community of which I am a member. But for some reason, that didn't get done. It's time to apply the brakes to this so-called progress and back out of this over-controlled little dictatorship that you have going on. The ordinances need to be seriously reviewed, and those that clearly violate the Constitution, and there are many, need to be removed. Those ridiculous signs need to be deleted, or at least adjusted, to punish only those who are habitual offenders. You also might want to reinstate a simply monthly newsletter to better inform the entire community. So here's an example of how this shoveling policy should actually read for a small town. Everyone is responsible for shoveling the snow on the sidewalk that surrounds your property. Try to get it done in a timely manner. If you notice your neighbor has not shoveled, please consider knocking on their door to see if they are alive. In the meantime, you might want to wear boots. I guarantee that the vast majority of people in this community will do the right thing. And on a side note, I will be growing my own chemical-free grass mulch this year. Do not send anyone over to mow it.
Any other comments on non-agenda-related items? Thank you all. We'll move on to written reports, starting with Fire Department. Chief Hoover is not present, but you do have his report. Any Fire Department questions for us to pass along? I do know Chris has been working, the locks at the station are acting up. We have to get a new controller, right, for the digital, the...
We have to get a controller so that we can access the codes to see if there's too many codes in it, because it seems like it's got too many codes, so I can't enter any new codes. I can change, I can pause codes, and I can, it looks like I can delete codes, but I can't add any new codes. So we have to get that, we will be implementing a, more of a phone system for the community room, which should, I think should help with the number of codes that get put in on a regular basis, since we have increased our volunteer firefighter staff.
Any Fire Department questions? City administration, we'll start with Public Works. Anything to add to your report?
Nothing to add to the report.
Any questions on the report? Moving on to City Clerk Report. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Questions? You will know, so again, we've talked about the snowstorm. We did get communication from Lynn County Emergency Management that there is federal and state funding that's being made available because we broke snowball records for 48-hour period. So when we say this was historic, the fact that they're offering replenishment funding for federal budgets should speak to that. So we have... So we have, we have applied for that, we'll find out more. All right, and last is Treasury.
Nothing to add.
We're on page 15. Chris and I did meet to go over the budget, so everything's looking good. So we should be, we, we just checked those last IFRS numbers and the things that we needed to plug in from our last workshop, so we're ready to move to the next step.
I saw something about we won't be doing something for a while until April, is that correct? Yes, the new House file, basically, the, the state and Lynn County have to catch up because the notices that they're gonna send to all residents. So they're gonna take our numbers that we have, and this isn't just our numbers, this is every city's numbers. They're gonna produce this paper that basically is going to break down, and this is just public information, in case you're wondering. You'll get a paper that'll break down where all your tax dollars go. So it'll say this much to the school, this much to the college, this much to the city, this much to Lynn County. It's basically gonna be a very transparent, um, thing that they're doing that's gonna show where all those tax dollars are going. Because of that, we can't move, we can't do anything else with the budget, even though we're done, until April 1st. And then we have 12 days after that, I have 12 days after that to finalize everything. So that'll be in that meeting, and then everything will be finalized at that point.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll be on to the consent agenda. Seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion through the consent agenda.
Motion by Bozenberg, second by Sukup. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, new business. First reading for amendment to floodplain ordinance, chapter 116. So I did talk through the changes, you do have the ordinance here. Again, it was minor changes, all coming from FEMA, so, I mean, if you want more information, you can let me know. Otherwise, I would seek a motion to approve the first reading of the amendment to floodplain ordinance, chapter 116. Move by Sukup. Second by Trump. Any further discussion? Do you need a roll call on this? I think we usually do a roll call on ordinances. Councilor Trump?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Councilor Sukup?
Aye.
Councilor Myers?
Aye.
Thank you. Yep, I want it.
How many motions?
Oh, no, I, I got very specific coverage, but thank you. I'm gonna seek a motion to suspend the rule requiring that an ordinance be voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, at which it is to be passed with respect to ordinance number, or chapter 116. Motion by Bozenberg. Second. Second by Sukup. Any further discussion? Wanna take a roll call on that? Councilor Trump?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Councilor Sukup?
Aye.
Councilor Myers?
Aye.
All right, now I would seek a motion to approve the final reading, passage, and adoption with respect to ordinance, chapter 116. Moved by Trump, second by Myers. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councilor Myers? Aye. Yeah, sorry. Councilor Sukup?
Aye.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Councilor Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, 13, old business, resolution 2024-03, a community sign policy. So you will see that here. I did work closely with our city attorney to just ensure that, um, everything in here is legal and defensible. I do wanna thank the Lions Club as well as the Albernett community for their support in bringing us this digital sign. I do think it's a valuable asset. What you'll see here is a culmination of feedback we received from the focus group that we did. I, I kept all the answers to those, as well as, as I mentioned, the response from the attorney and policies that I've seen in other, um, local cities. So as you'll note, at the top, we've got the allowed purposes. That was one of the concerns for the Lions Club. We, we put few limitations. So it is, it is relatively open. We do want it to be things of community interest, but that can be the celebrations and those types of things, as well as events. So we've included everything that conforms there. We do have prohibited purposes. That'd be anything advertising, commercial, political, solicitation for fundraising for for-profit organizations, and then opinions of belief.
Would you review the groups that were involved with the questions in developing this?
The focus group that we had?
Within town?
Yes, so we had a focus group. All nonprofits were invited, they were allowed a representative. I don't have in front of me who was there. The Lions Club was present, the Diamond Club, the...
Historical Society.
Historical Society, one of the churches, other churches were also, they're nonprofits. The Albernett Community Foundation, the Fire Association, and I'm, I may be missing one, but we had, I mean, we had, there were, I think there were 12 of us on the call. As well as Chester was the city council representative as well. So it does outline, um, service levels for the city because that was one of the concerns is, uh, you know, we, we really only have a staff and a half that would be responsible for posting these signs, and so we just wanna be respectful of their time. And so it outlines that when we receive a request, we'll have two business days to review it. That review process, I, I, I will respond to that concern. The review process is just to ensure that it aligns with the policy. So as long as it aligns, there's no reason it would be denied. But if we were to get a request for, for example, from a not a qualified nonprofit, that would be denied. But if it falls within the parameters of the policy, and then we have five business days to post that. Just because with, with priorities, with timelines, a great example is this time of year, between snow and budget stuff. We don't wanna, we don't wanna overcommit that we can get something turned around too quickly, so five business days. And that is prior to the request to date, so within the application, they can request a date. So we can receive it sooner than that. And then they can request the date that they would like it posted.
I, I have a question, is it okay?
Not usually. I, I can talk to you afterwards.
I, it's, I think it's relevant, I don't think it's a big deal. I mean, is there any reason why a volunteer can't come in here and get it on a computer and type in something if there's not enough time?
We did clear with the lawyer, um, that it has to be city staff because the city did purchase the sign.
I thought the Lions Club...
Lions Club, the Lions Club fully donated, but we have...
I don't have anywhere that that's in there. I'm sorry, you can do that. I don't think we need a lawyer to tell us to put a couple of nice messages on a sign.
So longer question, I'm gonna ask you to please let us continue our business.
Okay, well, it's also our business because we're part of the community.
Please, you've had your opportunity. This was an agenda item you could have spoken about.
I didn't know about it until you started speaking about it.
That's enough, thank you. So again, the, the message can take up to two screens per message. So again, that was feedback directly from the focus group. And we are limiting to six screens. And again, this, this is not a one and done. We can come back and look at this. Part of that is, you can only get through so many when you're driving through town. And so if we have too many, your message may never get seen. And again, that was also feedback from the focus group. That was a direct question that we asked, how many messages should be active at any time? Also from the focus group, we talked about, right now, we have the time and temperature displayed. Should those always be up, should those never be up? And it did, it was a depends, and so we built that in, that those will only be displayed if we've not maximized the six screens. And so if we have enough, if we have requests from multiple organizations that are all up at the same time, we would take down the time and temperature to allow space for those. And then to, we will have, because the organizations are sponsoring those messages, we do have the Home Harmless Indemnification Agreement. And again, all of this has been vetted by the city attorney. Any questions from council? Are there no questions? I would seek a motion to approve resolution 2024-03 for the community sign policy. Moved by Myers? Second by Sukup. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I move abstain.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Please note Bozenberg abstained, motion carries. All right. Resolution 2024-4, the sheep grazing agreement. This is with Sloan Farms. So again, this was redesigned in conjunction with our lawyer. We have sent this to Mr. Sloan for his feedback. I did make a goof. I wanted to have that to him in order to have his feedback before this meeting and looked at my calendar wrong, and we gave him a date of February 9th, thinking that our meeting was next week, so that's on me. So I will touch base with him again. But I did wanna get this in front of council. If council so pleases, I would be interested in you approving the lease agreement with the ability for me to make slight modifications in conjunction with Mr. Sloan, as long as we do not affect the intent of the agreement or we may have to call a special because the start date on this is March 1st.
Can this be a year, you think?
Yes, this is for one year. It is all the things that we talked about when he was here for that meeting. I've just not had an opportunity to get his feedback. I didn't have an email address for him, so we had to snail mail it. Questions on the sheep grazing agreement?
I move to adopt resolution 2024-04, with the provision the mayor can make minor modifications if necessary.
Motion by Trump?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right. Short agenda tonight, that brings us to final comment. I will start with Councilor Trump.
Thank you for all your comments. Sometimes we do things in this community that, and Larry, you've probably done this too. When you were on the council, you did some things and you find out maybe it wasn't as smooth as you expected it to be. And I know there were some comments made about snow plowing. We've got a new gentleman that's new on the job. I think he'll improve. We're trying to do things better.
Councilor Bosman?
And I would just, you know, I appreciate you guys' comments on the snow and that, and, you know, and getting people to help. You know, I, I live on Donald Drive, and I've done five driveways and sidewalks. You know, I go out and if they're gone, I do it, you know? So I help out our neighbors and they do the same with me. If I'm not there, they'll come over and do it. So, you know, that's just what it takes. It takes people who wanna go out and do something like that, you know? So, you know, I had a neighbor come and was crying one day because they cleaned up her sidewalk and her driveway, you know? Well, the payment, I says, keep it, I don't want it. So we can do it, it's just, if anybody wants to do it, so.
I just say appreciate everybody coming, the community involvement, and definitely can help us move forward to better the community in all the ways we can. So appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for coming, feedback's important. You know, and I really with this, I hope what this has helped to do with the snowstorm and everything that went was just kinda help us come together as a community and realize, you know, hey, well, maybe this person doesn't have their sidewalk taken care of. And be proactive. If you hear somebody who did receive one of these notices, you know, and get them in, either help them out or get them in touch with somebody who will. In the end, the main goal of this wasn't penalize, it's to ensure the safety of the kids that go up and down the sidewalks and to make sure that we have a safe community for those that wanna use those walking surfaces.
Shelby, anything to add? With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Oh, we did it first. Motion by Myers, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:45 PM.